Into order, please. Would you all please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm filling in for our Board President, Joe Colman, who is excused this evening. Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
William Baumgart.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Colman.
Thank you, Sue. Sue, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay. With the revised agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have no bright lights this evening. Chris Henstrom, do we have some recognitions?
Good evening, Board members. I have two new administrators to introduce you to tonight. The first that I'd like to introduce is Tiara Chambers. Tiara, can you join me, please? You approved Tiara Chambers' contract last month, and she will be the principal at East Alternative High School. She comes to us from West Dallas School District, and she'd like to say a few words for you, to you right now.
First, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to join your district. I'm very excited. I had the opportunity to go over this evening for orientation, so I've already met some of the families and students over at East, and I'm just very excited for this new journey at East and taking on this new role in my career. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Tiara. Best wishes to you for lots of success. It's a wonderful school. One of my favorite places to go. They do so many wonderful things for kids, so keep it rolling. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to introduce to you someone that many of you already know, Jeffrey Taggy. Jeffrey, could you please join me? Jeffrey has been a teacher in our school district, and last year, was it just last year? He was hired as the coordinator for innovation and personalized learning. And last month, you approved him to be the associate principal at Butler Middle School.
I, as well, also just wanted to thank the Board for approving me for this position. I continue to be impressed by how our district is moving more and more towards building capacity within our students and building that student agency, and I'm excited to continue to be part of that journey in a new role and excited to be joining the Butler team, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Best wishes in your new job, and we're happy to have you in the leadership position there. Thank you. Best wishes. Keep it going. Thank you, Chris. Okay, we have no student representatives with us this evening, and so therefore, we have no student reports. We are now at the part of the meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak, and as has been past practice, the individual, each individual will be limited to two to three minutes. So, I'm going to ask Kurt O'Brien if he would please monitor it. I have a little clock here for you, Kurt.
Do you have batteries in it?
I think so. No? Oh. Fell asleep in the drawer. Okay, so your speakers are limited to two or three minutes to speak in order for us to hear from our community and then get onto the agenda of our meeting this evening. So Kurt will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes in order to allow wrap-up of their comments. And as per usual, we expect all speakers to honor the time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful with your comments. Speakers that do not meet this expectation may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker is Paul Reese. Welcome, Paul.
That came quick. Takes quite a bit longer. I want to talk about something that was brought up at the CNI meeting last night.
Is yours speaker on, as far as you know?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Sounds like it. I hear a lack of...
Thank you.
Anyways, it was brought up about at-risk yesterday and some of the plans that this district has for at-risk students. And we often talk about some of the symptoms of at-risk students, juency and such like that, but never the causes. The causes are always left blank. Why, why are these kids at risk? Why? I mean, they're difficult questions, why? Because it's usually drugs and bad parenting. Those are some of the things that we don't want to always address, and because it's a touchy subject. When you say, "There are bad parents out there." I know, I went to school. I remember, there were houses I could do drugs at, the parents who bought us alcohol and provided drugs. I remember that. So, I know that little has changed since then. So, these are some of the root causes. So, what is done to address this? You know? My dad was a good father. He did his best. He never smoked, never drank, never swore. Sent me to public school, and he ended up with a kid in high school who did all of it. So, I know the torment that he, I put him through, and I fear for the parents who have to go through that, what I put my dad through at those ages. I was lucky, there was a drug and alcohol counselor outside of school that took care of, that talked to me and got through to me. But it wasn't through the school district. I know, I was involved with something called Project Change, and that was killed and strangled and squashed. And it was something that dealt with kids at risk that suffered from drug and alcohol problems. And they had problems with that, and they wanted them addressed, and they gave them a safe and secure environment to deal with that. How to deal with that? You keep them in the bar scene that is often our public schools. The chance for success is almost nothing, you know? I know I couldn't have done it unless I had been removed from the situation I was in. I just don't have that much willpower as a kid to face through those, just the harassment that goes on. So anyways, when you talk about spending all this money and doing these things, I would like to know what does all, defines success and failure? If you're going to hire all these people, what are the definitions of this? How are you going to measure these things? I think it's only a fair question, so.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, moving forward into our agenda, we will have the minute approval. So, we have minutes for approval, our May 16th, 2016 regular Board meeting. Is there a motion, please?
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? Comments? Okay, hearing none. Sue, would you take the roll?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy. Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion is approved eight-zero. Okay, communications. Todd Gray.
I have a couple of letters this evening. First one is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Eight, and he's congratulating Waukesha South High School for winning the sportsman awards for spring boys golf, girls soccer, and softball. My second letter is also from Dave Sternig, the Commissioner, congratulating Waukesha North High School for winning sportsmanship awards for spring boys golf, girls soccer, boys track, and girls track. The third letter, once again, Mr. Sternig, the Commissioner, congratulating Waukesha West High School for winning the sportsmanship awards this spring for boys golf and softball. And finally, the last one, which is also from our Commissioner, Dave Sternig, congratulating Waukesha High School for winning the overall sportsmanship award for 2015-16. So, congratulations to the South coaches and Mr. Dan Domack.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll just give you a brief update on the Waukesha Education Foundation, as I am the member of the Board, that's an ex-official member. The Waukesha Education Foundation is proud to announce that the 2016 grant recipients have been approved. After reviewing 53 proposals from 21 schools, 26 grant proposals were selected for funding. The foundation was able to award $28,605 of the 103,422 requests submitted. This is great news, but we are disappointed to not be able to respond to the other 27 proposals to further encourage innovation at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. We are working hard to build our endowment so more of these innovative ideas submitted by our talented staff may be funded each year. Details of the Waukesha Education Foundation's exciting future plans will be announced at a reception tomorrow evening at the Clark Hotel, and invitations have been extended to all of our school board members, and we hope to see you there. There will be several people from our community, and it'll be a very, very nice evening, and it would be very, very, I think, important for the people that are attending to meet Board members. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board is pleased that many of our school board members and key community members will be joining us to learn about the important role of grants having an enhancing curriculum in our school district and WEF's plan for future growth of our grant endowment program. And don't forget that the Bob Duckett Memorial Gaofouting is coming up on Monday, July 18th. This is a great opportunity to play at one of Waukesha County's finest private courses, The Legend of Merrill Hills, and you'll be able, at the same time, to support the Waukesha Education Foundation. This concludes my report. Okay, next, we have the Safety Committee report. Amanda Roddy. Amanda.
Thank you. The Safety Committee has not met since last month. The next meeting on the calendar is set for September 9th.
Okay.
There's usually a summer meeting, and that date will come up once everybody's calendars have aligned.
And you'll keep us informed of... Okay, thank you, Amanda. All right, Charter School report. Mr. Baumgart.
I have no Charter School report tonight. I guess they're all busy. Can't imagine why, this time of the year, but anyway, other than we couldn't, oh, she laughed. I was going to reintroduce our new principal of East High School, but we have no Charter report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Next, we have the approval of the CISA One contract, and Joe Cook will be leading us in that discussion. Mr. Cook?
Thank you. Annually, the Board has to approve the agreement with, between the district and the CISA One, the Cooperative Educational Services Agency. The primary, the purpose of that is to provide some professional development-type opportunities to the district, but also assist us with some of our special education programming and options for students with placements. If you take a look at the contract there, you will see that we do purchase several seats from CISA One to provide an educational experience and opportunity for students. In addition to that, you'll see some of our professional development marks in there as well.
Okay. We need to vote on that.
This is, this is an approval.
I'll move for approval of the contract with CISA One.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Any questions or comments about how we use CISA One? Maybe you could briefly go over that with us, Joe, since we have, you know, new Board members.
Sure. Our Cooperative Educational Service Agency, which is stationed out of Pewalki, provides professional development opportunities for teachers and administrators. So, through our assessment coordinators, through some CNI stuff, through our special ed pupil services work, we're able to go there and collaborate with a group of professionals. In addition to that, CISA One runs a number of school-type programs for students who need educational experiences that would go beyond what our, what our brick-and-mortar schools would provide for us in Waukesha.
Right. Thank you. And we're proud to say that Ryan Cronin is going to be moving over to CISA, so we'll have a continued connection with you, won't we, Mr. Cronin? That's great. Okay. Public gifts. Darren Clark.
Vote on...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We'll take a vote on that, please. Would you take the roll?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes eight-zero. Will I ever get that right? Thank you. Okay. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any Board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you have that opportunity. So, is there anyone that would like to ask for anything to be set aside? Okay, hearing none. There were no expulsions held recently, and if any Board member, I guess nobody has anything to set aside for separate consideration, so we'll just move on. Pat Madden will present the consent agenda for approval.
Need to do the gifts?
Pardon me?
The gifts.
There has to be the gifts.
Yeah, we have four gifts tonight. The first, a total of $10,000 was given to the Waukesha West Aquatic Roots Program from an anonymous donor to renovate and expand the greenhouse out at West High School. The second one, a total of $875 was given to the Waukesha Transition Academy from the Kiwanis Club to purchase seven iPads for sales students who are exiting the program. A total of $2,000 was given to Les Paul Middle School from Paul and Kathleen Omen to integrate technology, science, and math into the classroom. And the last was, a total of $4,000 was given to Les Paul Middle School from Northwestern Mutual as matching funds of Paul and Kathleen Omen's gift. This gift also will be used to integrate technology, science, and math into the classrooms.
Thank you. We're certainly appreciative of the support of those people. Okay. Now, we'll get on to Pat Madden. Pat will present the consent agenda for approval.
Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of eight resignations, one retirement, one leave of absence, and 34 new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desks. Madam President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kurt O'Brien. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Sue?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. The motion is approved eight-zero. Okay, next, we have the Superintendent's report. Dr. Gray.
First of all, congratulations to all our graduates and especially the parents of graduates. I think Mr. Reese said it tonight, that it's not always easy to get kids from, through that finish line, but we have a number of students at all three of our high schools that will be graduating on Saturday. And again, congratulations to them, and especially congratulate, congratulations to the parents who've gotten up to that point. You have cups, and I think, are the shirts? Do they have the shirts? You have some shirts waiting for you. The cups are from Gina Nordrum at South High School. Her students made those, and then some shirts from Becky Newcomer, principal at North, for their service day. So, they delivered those this week and wanted the Board to have some. I hope the sizes are okay that she delivered. I just want to say a special thanks and goodbye to a few people. First of all, Dave LaBord, who stepped in for one year as a principal, and it turned out to be three or four. He's done a wonderful job, and I'm certainly going to miss working with him. Dan Domack, who's spent his, almost his entire life here, I think, in the school district in a number of different athletic director roles, and Dan has been a wonderful leader over at South, and I know he's going to be missed. Mark Wagner, Horning Middle School, is retiring as well. And finally, Ryan Cronin, my chief assistant, is moving on to CISA One. But as Mrs. Brusink noted, he will be very much part of the district because we do a lot with the CISA One Institute. In fact, I think we're their biggest client or partner, and so I'm sure we'll see him around quite a bit. And as we've noticed, his two children are still in the district and will be for some time. Graduation. So. Thanks to all those people. Well, all of that last Friday, and I'm going to just quickly point out that it was a wonderful event with the Horning Flight Academy, but Mr. Baumgart was there the entire day, and he can add a lot more detail than I can.
If you recall, about two years ago, our kids were over there looking at the Weldall operation and trying to come up with ideas on how they might benefit by the use of iPads. And then they presented some of their ideas to the Weldall employees a month or two after that. Well, I think I mentioned previously that Weldall did call us. They offered, "Please bring the kids back over here so they can see what happened." And that is just very unusual when a partnership reaches that level of accomplishment. So, we took 27, 28 kids over there Friday, and they broke into two different groups. These were the kids that were there. Most of them are kids that were there two years ago. Some of those kids are in high school, so they weren't able to all get them all together. But anyway, they broke the kids into two groups, and they re-toured the facility, and they were able to see some of the applications that they had recommended to the supervisors and engineers and managers at Weldall two years ago, and they saw them in place. And it was interesting to what, now, first of all, it's not the best time of year to take kids anyplace, but they were distracted for sure, but they did see and they did hear of financial benefits that were accomplished because of their ideas. Well, I guess their financial, I was going to say time benefits because things that were able to be done maybe previously in four or five hours through the slow communication process of moving people through the plant and trying to find people and all that, the application of the iPads, almost instantaneous access to the engineer or to the customer or to the quality manager to fix up a problem, to bring it to immediate solutions. As they said, 15, 20 minutes instead of three or four hours to get something fixed. Reduced amount of paper, incredible. I can't remember the, I think they were printing over 500 pages a week for some meeting and, or just so they could see the work and process on the iPads for their meetings. So, to make it short, the kids did see a lot of different applications in the, in the plant and in the administration of the work that they do at Weldall. And came out of it, I think, feeling pretty good about what they did, feeling pretty good about what corporate America can do, and feeling good about themselves from the standpoint, when you've got an idea, share it with somebody. They'll listen, and they'll even listen to young teenagers in a situation like this. Well, that says very much about our partner, Weldall, the fact that they're willing to do this, take a risk, put it in place, and then we're interested enough in our school district to have the kids come back and actually see what happened. And to me, this was just one wonderful partnership with a very great and positive accomplishment, and I felt really good about it. I know the kids felt good about it. Jeff Lefty was there with us. Chris Crowder was there. Freeman was there. I think you might have noticed some of their work in the paper.
Yes.
Saturday, I believe it was Saturday. So, a really positive thing that we did with the partner, with a wonderful partner at Weldall.
Thank you. And finally, one, one other note here. Board packets will be delivered tomorrow as opposed to Friday, so in case it rains tomorrow, you can either make sure you know those are there, or you can let it go, and that's a good reason not to read all of everything, but they will be delivered tomorrow afternoon. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Baumgart, for sharing your...
You're welcome.
...your visit. Okay, we're going to move in now to our committee reports, and the first committee report this evening, Finance and Facilities, presented by Kurt O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you. We had one action item, and we didn't take any actions. It was the approval of the White Rock Campus Agreement. Committee reviewed a lease agreement for a portion of White Rock Campus with Adult Day Services of Southeast Wisconsin LLC as of August 1st, 2016. This item was discussed at the May meeting. After review, the administration was directed to go back and review language on early termination and utility cost estimates. So, this item will be brought back in July for, hopefully for final approval. That's the plan, anyway.
So, it's not an action item this evening?
Not an action, well, it was on the action item agenda.
Yeah, it is.
And now, it's not currently an action item because I'm not making any motions because the committee didn't approve anything. Next item is information items. There's two of them. We had our monthly budget report. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of May. $98,936 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $793,732 was expended during the month. $91,340 was reported in the Special Education Fund, and $2,312,613 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in all other areas. We also have a discussion, information item on year-end planning relative to our fund balances and where we're at on that. The committee was updated on the contingency plans being developed for the close of the 2015-16 fiscal year. Several potential paths were discussed on how we'd use the fund balance. We are a little bit, we have a smaller surplus this year, but we still have a surplus. In July, a recommendation will be brought forward for consideration. We brought up a lot of topics about buildings and facilities and to the district over the next year or so. Concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. All right. That's the record, right? Next is the...
One final thing. This is a beautiful cup, by the way.
It is.
Yeah. I was going to say that at the start of my report.
Next, we have the Curriculum and Instruction Committee report, presented by Patrick McCaffrey. Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting was held last night, June 7th, 2016, at 6:00 PM. We had one action item and seven information items that appeared on the agenda. The action item was approval of School District of Waukesha At-Risk Plan. At our April meeting, Sharon Thede and Ryan Pat provided an update on the process of identifying students at risk of not graduating high school. Last night, Sharon presented the formal plan, which captures what schools are already doing, formalizes notification to families, and keeps us in compliance with DPI requirements. Annually, each school board must approve the district plan that establishes how the school district will identify and serve children who meet the statutory definition and district definition of being a child at risk of not graduating from high school. On a vote of four-zero, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee approved the School District of Waukesha At-Risk Plan. We request Board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Okay. Any discussion, questions? Comments? Okay. Sue?
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. The motion passes eight-zero.
We also had seven information items at our meeting last night. Our first information item was Elementary Student Services Staffing Report. At last night's meeting, Joe Cook provided an update to the CNI Committee on the student services delivery model at the elementary level. He went through a brief history of staffing adjustments over the years and how it has evolved into the model being used today. Our second information item was the Sunday Reading Program. Jason Gehan was at last night's meeting to review this new program option for students with special education needs in the area of reading. Our third information item was Inclusive Practices Institute. Last night, Karen Peterson reported on an opportunity for special ed staff to attend an Inclusive Practices Leadership Seminar hosted by Elm Brook School District, located at Mount Mary College. The School District of Waukesha has been highlighting inclusive practices in our schools as a best practice for all students, with an emphasis on students identified with disabilities since 1995. This is a high-quality conference with nationally-recognized leaders presenting. Our fourth information item was District Family Engagement Events. Joe Cook highlighted the efforts being made by the School District of Waukesha in the area of family engagement. Involving families in school-based activities fosters positive engagement with educators and increases family awareness of student progress. Family engagement is an area of data collection for state, for the state, on our district practices. Our fifth information item was the CECS summary and 2016-17 focus. At our January 5th meeting, Patty Havel offered information about the Social Emotional Engagement Knowledge and Skills, or CECS, program, that we started this year with an introduction to principals and six specific schools piloting the program. Last evening, Joe Cook provided a summary on how things went this year and what the focus will be for the 2016... focus will be for the 2016-2017 school year. Our sixth informational item, Academic Career Planning Update and 2016-17 Focus. Sharon Thede and Amy Lang were present, were present to bring the CNI Committee members up to date on the academic and career planning services required by PI 26. Our seventh and final information item, our At-Risk 2015-2016 Board Report. Sharon Thede furnished the CNI Committee with preliminary student at-risk numbers for the 2015-16 school year. Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey.
I would like to point out that our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016.
Right. Please note that the CNI Committee will not meet in Jan, in July. Okay, next we have the Human Resources Committee, presented by Pat Madden.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item for action is approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Director of Elementary Learning. The administration is recommending Melissa Yao for the position of Director of Elementary Learning. Mrs. Yao is currently the principal of Bethesda Elementary School. We are very familiar and pleased with her work. We have full confidence that she will service the district well. Melissa has been in the district for nine years. She received her master's degree in elementary education from Abilene Christian University in Abilene, Texas, and her master's degree in educational leadership from Cardinal Stritch University. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Melissa Yao to the position of Director of Elementary Learning.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Any further discussion, questions, any comments? Okay, Sue, would you take the role?
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Deitz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes 8-0.
Our second action item is approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Principal of Lowell Elementary School. The administration is recommending Rachel Herman for the position of Principal of Lowell Elementary School. Ms. Herman currently serves as Coordinator of Humanities for the district. We are very familiar and pleased with her work. Ms. Landish and Chris Headstrom met with Ms. Herman, and based on this process, we have full confidence that she will serve the school well. Rachel Herman has been in the district for five years. She received her master's degree in curriculum and instruction from UW-Milwaukee and completed her Principal Director of Instruction licensure requirements at Carroll University. Salary and benefits will be according to middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Rachel Herman to the position of Principal of Lowell Elementary.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Reinacek. Any comments or discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. Sue, would you take the role?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Deitz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes 8-0.
Our third action item is approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Principal of Hawthorne STEM Elementary School. The administration is recommending UE Nguyen for the position of Principal of Hawthorne STEM Elementary. Mr. Nguyen is a deep thinker and a good at communicating with staff. He is able to build rapport exceptionally quickly because he does the work and asks the hard questions. His core values include a strong ethical background. He is curious and thoughtful. He is a humble leader that inspires dialogue rather than forces opinions. He is a consensus builder and figures out how to reconcile competing ideas. Mr. Nguyen is currently a classroom action research co-facilitator with the Madison Metropolitan School District. He has worked as a summer school principal intern, an elementary level teacher, and a school librarian. He received his Master of Science in K-12 Policy and Strand from UW-Madison, his Master of Arts in Educational Leadership from Columbia University, and his Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from UW-Madison. I move to approve the appointment of UE Nguyen for the position of Principal of Hawthorne STEM Elementary School.
Is there a second, please? A second?
Second.
Seconded by Patrick McCaffrey. Any questions, comments? Mr. Baumgart.
Yeah, just, we just recently got this. I just wanted to check on a couple of things and, and I think probably for Chris more than anybody. Can you please describe what a classroom action research co-facilitator is?
So the, I think the best way to describe that is someone who coaches teachers and helps facilitate integration of new curriculum initiatives.
So it's like we do with our coaches?
Yes.
Okay. Just a big title. Do you also know if this person is planning on relocating?
At this time, he may be commuting for a year, but then he's talking about his family moving to Waukesha or somewhere thereabouts.
Not a deal breaker. It's just something that makes me more comfortable.
Right, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you. Chris, I guess this is also directed towards you. Did he mention any experience with STEM other than the Master of Science in K-12 as Hawthorne is?
Yes, he spoke very learnedly about inquiry and personalized learning during his interview. So without actually using the acronym STEM, he did speak STEM.
STEM language, okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, here, Mr. O'Brien.
He has a very international resume, which is kind of nice. I mean, I think I kind of share also Mr. Baumgart's, I don't know if I want to phrase it as concerns, but something that would kind of bother me about commuting for a year from Madison. Really trying to avoid high turnover in our elementary schools, you know, we've had problems with that. And when you have a commuting situation, sometimes that just leads to that. So that's one of the current concerns. The other question I have, you know, is, and for me, it's not a deal breaker, of course, the same, is we must have seen in him tremendous potential and attributes because he really doesn't have a lot of prior administrative experience, based on the resume I'm looking at. Is that correct or am I misreading that?
I would say that he shows a lot of instructional leadership. The management of a school, he is short on, and that's something that I believe can be learned. And he does have the talent and the potential to manage a building in an effective way.
The other thing I, I want to bring to attention relative to all the candidates, and this is the last one to prove tonight, is the process that we use to go through administrators has been important to us for about, is a new process we developed about seven years ago or eight years ago. And that process came about that we wanted to have pre-knowledge and also make sure we approved contracts before the administration offered contracts. And so the process that we use today is something we developed back in the David Schmidt days. And before that, it was, you know, contracts were offered without board approval, which is not consistent with state guidelines. So today, we follow that system. And the administration generally has been very good at providing this information quickly prior to board meetings so we can do an assessment and ask questions, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's one, the, the, this candidate as well as the last one, my interest in both of these and my support of both of these is because they have the ability to build strong relationships with, with staff and parents. And that's something that, that I think we've, we've needed at those schools. And some, some may question the experience factor, but it's the talent factor to me in order to build these relationships. And again, we heard in, in the public forum about the importance of parents in this equation. And so that is why I was, I'm very supportive of both these particular candidates because they have that ability to do that piece. As you well know, principal can't teach all the kids. We need the teachers to do that, but we need the teachers all working together in, in a positive environment. And I believe both of these candidates will, will bring that about at these schools.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you. Yes, Ms. Roddy.
One last comment here. I don't know if it's going to make a difference at this point. However, I have heard from parents and staff at Hawthorne and those that were involved in the process, and they are looking forward to the potential of this candidate being part of the Hawthorne school. So just to back you up there.
Thank you for that. That's, that's important. Okay, anything else? Okay, Sue, would you take the role, please?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Deitz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes 8-0. Pat, does that conclude your report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Madam President, that does conclude my report.
Thank you. All right. Compensation Committee, presented by Pat Madden. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam President. We have some action items tonight. The first action item is approval of the 216-17 supplemental wages for teacher-employee group. On March 9th, 2016, the board approved supplemental pay in the form of steps and lanes on the teacher salary schedule for 216-17. However, approximately half of the employees within the teacher group are on the top step of Collins Edwood, receive base increase only. The base increase is limited to .12% in 2016-17, providing only a very small increase for about half of our staff members. Therefore, the recommendation is to add a step at the top of lanes 1M, 2M, and 3M, and add a step in between step 14 and the extra cell in lane 4M, and increase the 4M extra cell by .85%. The total cost is approximately $180,000 when calculating the additional .12% cost of base wages. The Compensation Committee approved this recommendation at its meeting on Monday afternoon. Madam President, I move to approve the supplemental wage increases for the 216-17 employees of, for, of the teacher-employee group as presented.
Okay. The motion, is there a second, please? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any questions? And I have a question, please. It says here in, in your comments that about half of our staff members will get the raise. It's in the middle of the paragraph. The base increase is limited to, and it says, providing only a very small increase for about half of our staff members. Would you explain that? Is that something you can explain?
Well, they've been in the district and the educational wife, they, they have moved up, so they're at the top of their cell, which you have a diagram in something else that shows all the, the lanes that they can go up.
Right, right, okay.
So there are a lot of our, I can't say elderly teachers because they're not elderly.
Experienced teachers.
Experienced is a good word, who are in that range.
Okay, they're kind of stuck there. Yeah, when you get to the top, I understand. Okay. Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, just when we say that, you know, the schedule that we have, and Waukesha's unique in that we do have a schedule that teachers can look at, new employees or current employees, and have some anticipation of what their next year's salary will be if they move along the schedule from either up, up a lane or across lanes. Those teachers are reasonably well taken care of through the schedule system, which we can suspend at any time, but generally, we've tried to make that go through. That's part of the supplemental package. And however, when they get to the top of the, of a lane, they're kind of locked there and don't get, don't receive much movement and don't receive much of a pay increase until they move a lane. What we've had a problem with is, you know, a lot of our teachers, and they've been very good about this, but it's been difficult, are receiving very low pay increases year to year because they're either locked in a lane or locked in a, you know, at the last corner. And if you're getting .1, .2% pay increases and calling that keeping pace with inflation is, is not even covering our health car cost. And, and, you know, this is consistent with Act 10. It's not, it's not against Act 10. In fact, I think it's part of making Act 10 successful when we look at what we're doing as a district and saying, our employees should be compensated reasonably relative to inflation, but we're not limited to the constraints of this base salary thing. We can, as a board, look at the supplemental side of the equation and make our own decisions in that regard. And the only way for Act 10 to work properly is for boards to act responsibly. And if we don't act responsibly in how we treat our employees, we can see, as always, something where you're not acting responsibly, you eventually lose it. So I think this process by increasing compensation appropriately for all our employees using supplemental pay is the appropriate action to take.
Ms. Reinacek. Okay, Mr. Baumgart.
It's really just a matter of clarification. Was the amount $180,000, just to make it clear, that will be distributed among a number of employees. I mean, it's, it's kind of funny when you hear $180,000 increase. It's being distributed among, what, four or five?
300-plus.
300-plus employees.
Yeah. It's actually a change in the salary schedule structure. We're adding steps and points. So if you're eligible to move into that step and it's agreed, the administration agrees that, you know, you've met the criteria.
About a $180,000 raise is.
Right.
It's a budget change.
Yeah.
It's a whole package.
That's a good point. Yeah, so it's a, it's a change in the step structure that actually from a, nobody wants to, if you're, if you're in the old system, pre-Act 10, they would never allow you to add a step. They always want to compress steps because it means it takes more years to get, you know, to the top. But in the way we work it with the schedule, we actually still keep the very, what we call flexibility of our schedule, but we add a step at the top so that it gives one more year of movement for those people who are locked instead of getting that .12% increase, which has been a problem for the last two or three years.
No, Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you. But our experienced teachers can still, still earn wages with strategic compensation where they can teach a seminar with their years of experience for our new teachers. They can do more instructions with our professional development. Is that correct or are they not able to do that?
Yeah, I mean, there's still a lot of, a lot of different things they can do, but a lot of those things that, that, those particular programs move people on the schedule. But when you're capped out at the top, that's, that's a problem, especially when you get into the master's lane. It's really hard to move. There have to be a number of other things that take place. And so this really kind of addresses that, that issue where people have been stuck for a year or two at that, at that top step or another top step in a, in a particular lane in, in the master section. And there's not much further room to move, so.
So if they're making around $62,000 a year, they could still earn an extra five by instructing...
Oh, there's, there's, I mean, they, they can do, you know, Schedule C type of work. There's, yeah, there's a lot of other opportunities to, to do things, you know, take on additional responsibilities and so on. That's correct.
I guess I'm going to ask for some clarification on Ms. Reinacek's comments. Do we give teachers a stipend or pay if they lead professional development during the summer or anytime during the school year? Is that extra compensation?
It, it might be, depending on the program. You know, there's additional pay for summer school and so on.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's kind of a broad question.
Yes, it is.
And, but there, again, there are other opportunities to either get additional pay or cause a, a lane movement from left to right with, on the new schedule, which, which brings them into a new salary range.
Do all teachers get this raise or is it some, some of it's determined by their evaluation?
It's depending where you are on the, on the salary schedule. Prior to this, a number of teachers were moving on the schedule, but, but maybe only about 50%. This allows a, a large portion of those to, to move. Again, you know, we've been capped by low CPI increases the last few years, so we were trying to look at, for something that...
So, we were trying to look for something that was fair to as many staff as possible that made, you know, sense, that could be replicated year after year.
What is the role of teacher evaluation in compensation?
Well, if they... Obviously, that impacts whether they move on a step or a lane.
Okay. And that's determined by their building principal or their evaluator?
Evaluator, whoever that may be.
Whoever that may be.
Typically, principal, but there could be some other... There might be, you know, Chris may get involved, Ryan, Joe might get involved as well.
Okay, so, I guess it's important for me to say that not 100% of the teachers will get some added compensation.
Well, that depends on what happens with the base pay. If that takes place, then yes, 100% will. But some of those will be very minimal without this particular plan in place.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCaffrey.
Are we putting $180,000 onto the salary schedule? Or is it just a budgetary thing? Because that's...
That's the budgetary cost.
It's the budgetary cost of putting $180,000 on the salary schedule.
It's a budgetary... It's putting those... It's putting those on the schedule, okay? For example, that was done with last year's staffing, and as you see, some people have retired and left.
Yes.
So, they won't actually be hitting that lane. But Darren has to use a snapshot from last year. Many, you know, as some of these people have now retired or leaving, they'll be replaced by lower salaries. And so, that 180 is simply a budget target.
Okay.
That's all it means. So, for instance, Mr. McCaffrey, if I may, on page, on this page here, it goes over the budgetary impact of... What we approved previously was the approved step advancement was 646607, and then the additional supplemental. So, altogether, our percent increase is .3%. This is .3% of the total at 179817 versus the previous approved 724149. And base wage CPI is only $55,281. So, overall, if you add it all together, if everything happened, we did this plus whatever, it could come out to an overall increase budgetary cost-wise of 1.62%. So, what you have to do is estimate the dollar cost for something like this. Before we approve it, we want to know how that packs our budget. Just like everything else, even the supplemental pay that we approved previously, we always have the discretion not to do it if we don't have the budgetary confidence that it's correct.
I guess my concern is, and it's not really a concern because I have no problem with it. I think that, you know, we have to compensate our teachers correctly. But, I mean, we're adding a step, correct?
Correct.
Are we going to be able to take that step away next year?
We could do it if we want.
But are we going to? Because that's...
Yeah.
I mean, that's the definition of supplemental pay.
Right.
We take it away. I don't think we are, right?
Well, I mean, we could...
And I'm just concerned that we're approving a supplemental pay when we're adding actually a step on the salary schedule.
But that...
We have had teachers locked in.
Yeah. But that's how it's defined. You know, I mean, it has to be defined as base or supplemental. So, every other step on that schedule technically is supplemental. And we have total control over what we do with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand we're adding a step to the salary schedule. Because every time you talk about supplemental pay, I mean, what comes to mind is a set amount is given to an employee. But next year, there's no guarantee they're going to get it. However, I mean, I don't think we're going to take a step away from it next year.
No, we probably won't.
So, that's why, that's my concern about calling it supplemental pay. We're adding a step to the salary schedule.
But that's the legal term we have to use in this...
I just wanted to make sure that's the legal...
Yeah, that's all it is.
Thank you.
I think it's important, anyway, to me, to note how competitive we are. So, could you respond to that, Todd?
Well, I think that's part of what administration worked with the Compensation Committee is to make sure that, you know, beginning pay and ending pay need to be competitive. I think this really puts our maximum pay, our top pay on the schedule, into a much more competitive situation. We need to keep looking at that year to year. Part of what you see here in the resignations are because other districts are stealing our good staff members.
It's a competitive market right now.
And so, we need to make sure that we can, you know, not allow that to happen. And if it's just for a want of a change like this, it makes sense.
Yeah, no, I agree 100%. I just wanted to make sure that I had my definitions correct about supplemental versus adding a step.
You do, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, just, let's just be clear, supplemental is just a phrase.
Yes. That's what I wanted to make clear.
Okay, it's... The idea of supplemental is that's the part that we, as a board, completely control, right? The other part, the base, is part of the bargaining aspect. So, when we put money into supplemental, it stays there. I mean, it's not, we're not going to turn around most likely and cut people's pay next year. I mean, that's just the way it is. And the expectation from people who join this district when they look at the schedule is that they're going to move on the schedule the way it's lined out for them and that we're not going to take it away. That's their thoughts in their minds. We've made it clear that every year, the Board will review this relative to our budgetary situation. And we may suspend the schedule, you know, the movement on the schedule if we have a budgetary problem, because that's our right within the supplemental pay program. So, but when you think of supplemental pay, it's just how we adjust the salary schedule, okay?
Mr. Dietz.
Could you clarify for me what role, if any, the EAW plays in compensation for teachers?
Absolutely nothing.
Zero in supplemental. Absolutely zero. By state law, they have no role in supplemental pay. We aren't allowed to talk about it in bargaining. We only talk about base in bargaining.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so... Is there a motion on the floor? Okay, and any more comments, questions? Okay, Sue, would you take the role?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
And Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes eight zero. Pat?
My next action item is approval of the 201617 support staff wages. In determining the appropriate support staff wages, the district completed a compensation survey with area school districts. Based on that survey, a recommendation was made to approve salary increases for our hourly employees' support staff. Clerical employees will receive steps and increases on the salary schedule in the amount of 3.27% and average of 45 cents per hour. The step increases will be applied in 10 cent intervals on steps 1 through 5, 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50. Educational assistants will receive step increases on the salary schedule in the amount of 3.18 with an hourly rate increase of 35 cents per hour. Custodial and maintenance employees will receive steps and increases on the salary schedule in the amount of 1.24 for an hourly increase of 30 cents per hour per step. A copy of the salary schedules is included in your packet. Madam President, I move to approve the wage increases for the 201617 year for employees of the support staff group as presented.
Is there a second, please? A second? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Questions?
Can I just make a quick point on that?
Absolutely.
The reason you're seeing different percentages from what you might see compared to that .12% when an employee group is non-unionized, there is no cap. So, that's why, if someone's wondering why these percentage versus other ones, that is the factor here, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. McCaffrey.
Do we know what the budgetary cost is going to be on that, the dollar amount?
There it is.
There it does. Yeah, the sheet you have in front of you, the yellow section was based off of our initial budget projections, the 1.62% we used in January. And then, in blue, shows where we varied from that original budget projection. If you recall, we were in a good, solid position for 1617 at that time. The pool of funds, the center column, that's the net increase from where we are today. And the blue columns from where we are when we initially set up some budget projections in late 15, early 16. And if you, the paragraph at the top kind of walks you through how we varied from that original projection. Pretty much is based on a better fiscal outlook at the end of this year and early next year that allows us to increase to an average of just over 2% for all these groups that we're going to be discussing that are non-teacher groups, so.
Is that competitive also?
Right, I believe that was the work that was done at Chris's office in terms of comparing what other districts are paying, so.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you, and I just wanted to mention that Chris, or, sorry, Sue makes us cookies every meeting, not just tonight, because of this. So, that it's just...
I wasn't buying both.
Right, right.
Sue takes good care of us. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dietz.
I just want to know if there was a reason why other subgroups are always given, like, across-the-board increases when teachers are not? Is there a reason for that?
That, or...
I mean, because what teachers is...
Yeah, I'll let Mr. O'Brien answer, but that's not accurate, but that's...
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not completely accurate. I mean, the issue is that we work off a very complex schedule. And we're also always trying to adjust that schedule relative to the, how we distribute supplemental. And base wage, that tends to be negotiated, how that money's distributed. And, but that's a relatively small amount, right? So, we look at how we need to adjust the schedule relative to the competitiveness in either attracting people or retaining people. And it's not the same when we're looking at the other units where it's more of a flat salary type with a very flatter pay scale. So, managing a salary schedule is a complex thing. And we're one of the few districts that go to the effort and time to have a schedule. For a number of years, we didn't have one, and that created other issues that we weren't happy with. But we're using the schedule to compensate our employees properly and also encourage them to advance themselves as, from professional development and contributing to the district with their talents. So, it's, you can't do the same thing with, from group of people to group of people to group of people when they're compensated differently. And they have different educational backgrounds and different roles in the district. I'd also like to add, too, is that a lot of these groups have a relatively small, compact salary schedule that they work off of, whereas the teachers' group, they have the bigger salary schedule. But there's also other opportunities for them to, you know, earn additional compensation, which isn't, these groups don't typically have. So, it is a completely different situation, so.
Ms. Reinacek.
Todd, you said something about because these groups do not have, they're not represented by their union, they, we can go above the .12?
Right, that's the law. If there is no union in place, that employee group or a group of, subgroup of employees are not subject to the CPI cap.
So, if the teachers in Waukesha chose not to have union representation, they could go above the .12?
I don't want to, you know, opine on the law here, but I'm assuming that would be the case, so.
Mr. O'Brien.
I think you should look at that, when we're dealing with these other units, it's 100% supplemental, okay? With the bargaining unit, it's not 100% supplemental. They have a right to bargain for a small amount that's capped by law. And then the rest, if we choose, is supplemental. So, it complicates things, but, you know, that's the way to look at it. When you're dealing with all the other units, it's 100% supplemental.
Any other questions, comments?
So, teachers have a right to bargain in the district? Is that what you said?
As long as they have a union, yeah.
Okay. Sue, would you take the role, please?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes eight zero. Ms. Madden.
The next item is approval of the 201617 administration and non-unit salaries. At its meeting on Monday, June 6, the Compensation Committee approved of administrator and non-unit salary increases for 201617 year. Executive administrators are recommended to receive an increase of 1.5 in 201617. Mid-management administrators are recommended to receive an increase of 2% as are non-unit managers. The calculations amid management salary schedule is included in your packet. Increases will be distributed on satisfactory performance. Madam President, I move to approve the salary increases for administration and non-unit employees as presented.
Okay, is there a second, please? Second, Mr. Baumgart. Could you define what you, what non-unit employees are, for the sake of clarification?
Well, one of them is Sue.
Okay.
These are the higher...
Yes, okay.
Administrative help.
Okay. Like the CNI secretary, etc.
CNI, some of our IT folks.
Right.
Yeah, okay. HR people. Okay, great, thank you, Pat. All right, any questions, comments, discussion?
I want to state unequivocally, I'm not influenced by the cookies. Yeah, right. I'm not being influenced by the cookies.
Sure.
Should have made brownies.
Okay, any, anything else? All right, Sue, take the role, please.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
And Barbara Brusink.
Aye. Motion passes eight zero. Pat?
The next item is upon confirmation that the EAW and Board are at an impasse, authorize a negotiation team to implement its last offer of .12% on base wages for 216 to 17. At its meeting on Monday, June 6, 2016, the Compensation Committee met in closed session to determine the next steps for the negotiations of the 216 to 17 base wages for teachers/employment group represented by the Education Association of Waukesha. Number one, the school Board and EAW began negotiations for the 21617 collective bargaining agreement on March 29, 2016. Although Board initially offered a 0% increase, it then offered to increase each teacher's base wage by .12, which is the maximum allowable under the COLA cap of Act 10. In addition, the EAW was informed that the Board had approved a 1.23 supplemental increase in the form of steps and lanes on the salary schedule. Two, in addition, the Board's negotiation team later advised the EAW that intended to provide an additional supplemental wage increase of $179,817 for those at the top steps on the master's side of the salary schedule. Three, the EAW's initial offer exceeded the COLA cap and as a result, is forbidden by Act 10 absentee referendum. The EAW presented the Board's settlement offer to EAW members who comprise of perhaps 500 out of 950 or so teachers, approximately 71% of the EAW members, and 68% of those, an estimated 220 members, voted it down. The EAW leadership did not recommend its approval. Number four, as a result, the parties have no agreement, no tentative agreement, and are at impasse. The Board really has no more to offer as a base wage increase since our settlement offer is at the Act 10 COLA cap of .12%. Under five, the parties reach impasse under Act 10. The Board is allowed to implement its last offer. Thus, the committee recommends that the Board authorize the implementation of its last offer, which you have a copy of, that provides an increase of .12%. We also recommended that the Board approve the supplemental wage increase described earlier. In addition, as you will recall, the Board had earlier approved a supplemental wage increase of $724,149. That increase, plus the one that was recommended tonight, brings the total supplemental wage increase to 1.53% on average. The implementation on the Board's settlement offer would raise the total wage increase to 1.62%. Committee is very disappointed that the EAW leadership chose not to recommend that the union membership approved Board's offer. We further, are further disappointed that a minority of teachers would vote against accepting this offer that would benefit all teachers. As a result of implementing the settlement offer without the EAW's approval is the only way to ensure that all of the teachers receive the base wage increase. is the only way to ensure that all of the teachers receive the base wage increase. Madam President, I move to authorize the negotiations committee to implement the board's last offer of .12 percent on base wages for the 2016-217 school year after confirming that we are at impasse with EAW.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second to the motion, okay. Questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Sue, would you take the role?
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye, motion passes eight zero.
That concludes my, thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Madden. Okay, moving forward, Policy Committee?
Okay, that would be me. Policy Committee met a couple of weeks ago, and we have two items for discussion to follow up at a future meeting for approval. First is revision of policy 8343, which is a policy which describes the board agenda. And we have two cha, two changes to the board agenda. In the General Business Section H, we, we have previously referred to communications. We're going to have that expanded to be communications plus the WEF, the Wisconsin Waukesha Education Foundation Report. So we'll just be adding that to the, that item on the agenda, which is what we've been doing for some time anyway. And then Item J, which had previously been just a charter liaison report, is going to be expanded to be charter, school, and program report so that we can discuss things that are going on, for instance, in the flight or the, like we did today with the situation at Weldal, things like that. And just anything else positive that's going on or necessary to report on in the schools as well and programs. So that is, as I said, the first reading, it would be coming up again in our July meeting. Any questions on that item? It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions?
And the second policy, which is not numbered yet because it will be a new policy, deals with something that you have heard about in a couple of previous meetings, a potential new policy which addresses the Wisconsin Seal of Bilinguality and Global Education Achievement Certificate. Dee Garcia has presented this. It will allow the students that we have studying in bilingual programs to expand with, with a series of steps that they have to go through. We'll be able to expand and get the seal of approval that, that they have either or both, the bilinguality or the global education achievement certificate. It is explained in much more detail in your packet. And, so did you have anything you wanted to add on that? I know she told me you were covering for her.
Really, the, the policy is there to capture what our students are currently doing. So if, you know, the updates that we've had the past, you know, year and, through the CNI Committee about the fifth and sixth year AP Spanish offerings that we have, this is an opportunity to acknowledge that on the transcript and diploma for these students. The, the opportunities where we have students who speak languages, we have the dual language program, which is the English-Spanish program in a, in our district. We do have students that come proficient with other languages. We want to be able to acknowledge that as well and, and their proficiency and their use of language in and about the community, through service, through employment, development, and such, so.
So we will be bringing that back at our next policy meeting as well. Our next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for June 14th, by the way. That is a change, you should have all been notified of that by this point, okay? And just as a point of information relative to the upcoming meeting, and you probably all recognized in the appointments for committees earlier this year, that we've expanded that committee to five members. And both of our new board members have joined us on that committee and it's, which is pretty traditional, a good place to learn. And we will be really digging into a lot of work with the NEOLA. In fact, Joe spent some time with us in, in the previous meeting just explaining a little bit to, particularly to Amanda and Greg about NEOLA. And we will be beginning to get into much more of that effort over the next couple of meetings, and we'll keep you up to date on that, so. That's all, all the policy report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Any questions, comments? Okay. Next, we have the Technology Committee. Mr. McCaffrey?
Thank you, Ms. Brusink. I have no report this evening. Our next Technology Committee meeting is Wednesday, June 22nd, 2016.
Tuesday, June 22nd, okay. What time?
Six.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Here in the boardroom?
Across the hall.
Room 109.
109.
Okay, great. All right. I'm getting to the end of our meeting. I'm, under other business, are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? Ms. Reinacek?
You were recognized, you were recognized, I wasn't.
Someone wants to recognize him.
Aw.
So a former board member asked if, I could ask if we ever contacted MEATAP of Wisconsin to verify our energy savings from our recent projects?
Who, what was the name? Is that the Wisconsin, the auditor from Wisconsin?
MEATAP, it's in Wisconsin. It's an independent, I believe it's, they verify our savings.
Yeah, I think that's, they, they had presented earlier, and I believe that they have or are in process of doing that.
Let me try that.
Mr. O'Brien?
It was on the agenda, we were going to put it on the agenda two, two meetings ago. We had to take it off because the agenda got way too long, you know, and so we had to take it off. We planned to put it on this last, a review with this, the whole project review, which would include something like that. We plan to put it on a future agenda, maybe next month, depending upon Siemens availability, I think was the problem this last month, wasn't that correct?
Yeah, we're, right now, since we skipped that meeting, now we're trying to collaborate schedules. But the state of Wisconsin, which was brought in as a third party for all this, is hoping to report out either in July or August. We just haven't confirmed the date yet with them, but there should be a report this summer.
So I, I think the former board member is asking, you know, hey, this is going to be put on the agenda, why haven't I seen it yet? And that's why we ran really long on the previous meeting and the second one. Siemens wasn't available to present to us, and we're trying to get a good comprehensive review and audit of the program, which is inappropriate. We agreed it was appropriate at the time when it was brought up by the former board member, okay?
Okay. Any other items you want to include or have considered for further agendas? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
We need to put on the policy clarification. We have an ongoing situation relative to credits that's not consistent with our board policy. And we either need to correct that situation or modify our policy. And it has to do with youth options versus, you know, other courses that receive different point considerations. And I think that needs to be clarified as soon as possible before the next school year starts because of things that were taking place outside of policy. When parents are contacting board members, we refer to policy. And then when policy doesn't address what, what's being done, that's a problem. So we need to clear, clean that up, either not do what's being done or correct the policy. So I want that on the-
And actually, that particular issue, now, Jody, I see she left, but she is working on a, some options, looking at what other districts do in terms of, you know, typically that comes into play when you're calculating for valedictorian. And, and there are some other options. We're looking at what a lot of other districts are doing in the area. And so that, I, I'm going to have her do her research on that. And that will most likely be presented this summer.
I, I just want to be clear, there's a fairness issue, there's a, we've done some things there that we need to clean up, and I think that's clear. And the sooner the better. And we have to take a bigger view of individual actions that have been taken and how they're in conflict, okay?
Is there a policy number for that?
Yeah, we, we know the situation. We know exactly. Mr. O'Brien spoke to me earlier-
Okay.
-this week about the situation. So we're, we're, it is under review right now.
Okay, so that will be brought to the board?
Uh, policy.
Policy, very near future, okay? Anything else? Any other items that anyone would like to add or have considered? Okay. It looks like we're going to adjourn to executive session. So could we have a motion to do so, please?
Which one do we need?
We do not need B.
We don't need B because there was no expulsion. Mr. Baumgart?
Will we adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 parentheses I, one parentheses, parentheses C to discuss base wage negotiations with the EAW?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Sue?
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye, motion passes eight zero. Okay, being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your participation tonight.